I call this meeting the Epsom County Commission to Order. We have a moment of silent notation followed by a pledge of prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance and approval of events for a May 18, 2017 meeting, June 7, 2017 spatial meeting, and June 8, 2017 meeting.
Our pledge of allegiance to the little life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have these guys had a chance to review the minutes from May 8th, May 7, or June 8, 2017? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Remove the second on my favor. All opposed, voted no. On my favor, shake your flag, say no.
Aye.
There's none. I have said no. I got messed up, Tom. Uh, scheduled appointments at 3:15. We have Cheyenne Walters, Program Director for Community Corrections, and Roger Robinson, Corporate, Corporal and Home Confinement Supervisor, discussion regarding GPS monitoring, contract and contracts, and office space lease agreement renewal. 3:30, we have further discussion on property owned by Jessica Bennington, located in Banks Tax District, Tax Map 2Q, Partial 46, Case Number 041212-01. The last extension given was during the regularly scheduled commission meeting held on April 6, 2017. Item 2, Discussion Action Approval. Correspondence from Patty Adams, Chairman of the Epsom County Republican Executive Committee, requesting use of the courthouse plaza on Tuesday, June 20, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to celebrate West Virginia's birthday with cake and drinks. Mrs. Adams is also requesting that the committee be approved, be approved, use of the two tables and ten chairs. A certificate of liability insurance naming the commission as a certified holder which has been provided. Is that the same as the additional insured?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Remove the second on my favor, shake your flag, say no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have. Item 2, Correspondence from Carrie Wallace, on behalf of the Epsom County Youth Camp Nominated Committee for the Epsom County Youth Camp Board, recommending the appointment of Virginia Burnside Croft to the Youth Camp Board. Upon approval, her term will begin on June 1, 2017, and expire May 23, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Remove the second on my favor, shake your flag, say no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have. Item 3, Correspondence from Aaron Harris, respectfully submitting his resignation from the Epsom County Fire Board effective June 30, 2017. Mr. Harris is a community representative from the 2nd District, and his term is set to expire on June 30, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Remove the second on my favor, shake your flag, say no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have. So moved. Item 4, Correspondence from Carrie Wallace, Administrator, requesting temporary full-time employment of Mildred Jeanne Ziegelfus at her current rate of pay, effective on or around August 15, 2017, for no more than 12 weeks. If approved, Mrs. Ziegelfus will continue to work part-time in her current position as Administrator Assistant in the Addressing and Mapping Department, but will also work part-time as a Commission Assistant during the upcoming short-term vacancy expected in the Commission's office. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Remove the second on my favor, shake your flag, say no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have. So, item 5, Approval of Application for Donated Lea. Item 8, Lead to Executive Session for West Virginia Code 6-98-4. Do you want me to go into executive session?
I think we always approve the application for donated lea, but I'm seeing any going in there is definitely.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Remove the second on my favor, shake your flag, say no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have. So moved. For your information, item, item 1, Correspondence from Governor Jim Justice Announcing the Stop Violence Against Women Act Grant Award to the Epsom County, Epsom County Commission in the amount of $26,496. These funds provide for the enhancement and the continuation of the Epsom County Stop Team to improve the criminal justice system response to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and date violence. Item 2, Correspondence from Austin Capertown, Cabinet Secretary of the West Virginia DEP, reappointing Mr. G. Paul Richter to the Board of Directors of the Epsom County Solid Waste Authority effective July 1, 2017, and his appointment will expire on June 30, 2011. Item 3, Correspondence from Charles K. McKenny, Assistant Chief Inspector, Chief Inspector Division of the Office of the State Auditorium, closing the report on a fine agreed upon procedure of the Epsom County magistrate court for the period ending December 3 for 2016. Report is available for public review in the Epsom County Commission Office. Item 4, Epsom County Commercial Solid Waste Facility, City Plan Revised 2017, approved by the UC SWA on 3/13/17 and by the West Virginia SWMB on 4/19/17. Item 5, Epsom County Building Commission May 2017, under six newsletters and ordinance verification. Item 7, Agendas and Order of Meetings, made meeting minutes, nine meetings. Item 2, Appointments Needed Directly. Tabled items of the U.S. Census Bureau Local Update Census Advance Project and award for the Epsom County, for the courthouse courtroom wheelchair, Lee. Buddy, that bid came in, what, $60,000?
Yeah. An email on Word.
How about some information you have with you, though? So, I spoke with the grass facility improvement authority director, and I've looked over the numbers and the work that's been done with the right here, sure, facilities director. You have the budget in front of you, the grant budget that was put together when we applied. The numbers in red are the revised numbers. Since you decided to not utilize an architect and have the maintenance department complete the repairs and do all of the work, it was able to save money in a lot of these different categories. So, once we moved around funds, we were able to make it to where if you decided you wanted to move forward with the bid award, you'd actually come in under $125,000, that was originally budgeted. You'd be at the $116,600, and that's including a contingency. So if you want to move forward, the funds are there. And the funds are there because the maintenance department is doing the work. And if you stop in there, they've actually already removed one of the doors, removed some of the carpet off the walls, and they're just looking really good. The judges have helped with the work as well.
Are they standing or?
And then she slid carpet off the back of the wall. It's a lot better.
The other main project will be reconfiguring the juror box, but that'll be the last item that they begin on due to the work schedule and how much work it'll take. So the grant funding, you've been approved for the quarter in line, and it just took maybe some of the money around.
So these other numbers that we had plugged in here before were without using architects?
Correct. The numbers in black were based upon you bidding out the job using a contractor and an architect. The numbers in red were compiled after looking at what has already been charged and the cost that we anticipate. And in the beginning, the idea was with the juror box, you were going to have to shift the juror box over, but we found a different solution for the rightfully, so that we'll just be able to cut out a portion in front of the juror box and make a mechanism where you have like a fallout stair that would go underneath the second row of chairs so that a wheelchair can enter that way. So you were able to decrease that line by about $15,000. And I've discussed that solution with the equipment authority director, and she said that sounds fine because you're still making it accessible.
Well, long as we get the money and grants, I say go ahead. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Move second.
I wish that number was a little less, but that being said, we do have grants, so I'll go ahead and second that.
Remove second on my favor, shake your flag, say no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have. So moved. Next, we are remitting the meeting of the Epsom County Commissions, June 27, 2017, 9:00 a.m. in Epsom County Courthouse Center. Sierra?
Cheyenne.
Or Cheyenne, I'm sorry. Do that every time.
Hey, that's my sister's name, so far.
Okay. We have a 3:15 appointment with Cheyenne Walters, Program Director for the Community Correction, and Roger Robinson, Corporal and Home Confinement Supervisor, discussion regarding GPS monitoring, contracts, and office space lease agreement. Do you want to go first?
She probably don't make me do it all. How you guys doing?
Good.
Good, Ron.
What carries passing around here is just, I met with a SCRAM unit representative, me and Cheyenne did. He currently does the alcohol monitoring for, for us from the Dairy Port Center. I met with him about how their GPS home confinement units work. From what I have seen and what we have tested, he gives a couple of units a test, they go all over the county, they work considerably better than the current ones that we have that we've been utilizing with 3N. They actually give us some prices, some prices, as you can see there. The pricing per unit, per day would be $3.20, or $3.19. Our term is $3.20 is what we, we pay for them. These are all rental units. They're not, we don't own them. So, they have a lost and damaged, as you can see, there's like 5%. They said that that's if, with the current amount of units that we have, which is going to be somewhere between 30 and 40, a 5% lost and damage means that we could either lose or damage one or two a year, which we don't normally do that, before we would have to pay anything. Normally, if one of the clients cut the bracelet off, they are made to pay for the bracelet anyway. So, the replacement cost is about $650 for these bracelets. Everything that I've seen is, it's considerably better unit than what we have. We've been having some serious issues with the ones that we have as far as giving the strap tamperers. And what a strap tamperer is, is when they notify me that if they're messing with the bracelets or trying to take it off. Well, I've been getting a lot, and for me to have to run out and check on every one of them, it gets repetitive and there's nothing wrong with it. It's just giving those alert. We've talked to the company, they sent us a different type of clip because they said the clips were all going bad, it's still the same issue we've been having. So rather than run out on every one, and sometimes I'll get six and seven a day, you know, and check on them, it's just not, it's not worth, worth the time or the money going on checking on them. So, with this unit, like I said, we've tested, we went through it down at the Sebby'sville, back up, and then monitored them the entire way. It has instant tracking, which means there's no delay. So whenever you pick it up and look at it on your computer, it's instantly telling you at that time of day where they're at.
Did the other one have a delay?
The other one had a delay. Sometimes, and to be honest with you, sometimes the delay could be anywhere from 10 minutes to hours, especially if somebody cut it off. So we just don't need that kind of, that kind of problem. You know, and when you're talking about an hour, somebody cut the bracelet off, where can they be?
Rodney, if you're talking about a better device that would do a better job for less money, I don't think you're going to find anybody here that's not a Ford. I'm the most conservative, and from what you said, I'm Ford.
Yeah, and the good thing is they actually have phone apps now, so we can actually pull them up on our phone and track everybody. It coincides with Cheyenne's SCRAM unit, that she can look at mine, I can look at hers. If one of my, if we share the same people, they only wear one unit. This bracelet, for them to get it off, that they would have to break it. The other ones, they just reach down and cut it. So they would have to physically break the unit to get it off.
So, so this, this could save us another time, too?
Yes. And I don't charge you a little bit of time of my shit. But yeah, I mean, it does, it does save, it does help. But like I said, it saves me from running out and checking on these guys. You know, and the fortunate thing is, is I don't, the first thing the SCRAM unit guy said, you're having a lot of strap tamperers, aren't you? And there's so many other counties that are switching that use the same one that we do because of that problem. So, yeah.
What's shelf unit overage fee?
The shelf unit overage fee is, if we tell them that we need 30 units, okay, and we end up using, having to call and get like 10 more, that would be an overage on it. So it'd be another $1.50. But I wouldn't anticipate, or if we tell them we need 40 units and we have to get more of them, then, so it's all in a matter of, because we average somewhere around 30. So if we can keep 35 and commit to 35, we're not, we're not going to go over.
Okay, so, so the $1.50 would be additional to the $3.19 you've charged?
Yes. Yeah, for some reason we have, we say we got 35 units, and for some reason we get five more people put on in that week, and we have to call and say, hey, we need five more bracelets this week. Get them, get them sent to us now, that would be your overage on it. But we vary, I mean, it fluctuates up and down and then.
How long does that last, a $1.50 charge on those five bracelets?
Until we would get one of the other 30 off and put them on one of those bracelets and send theirs back. I actually spoke to the representative, and he goes, you know what, we have to put that in there. But we don't, we never usually charge for it. He said, it's just a, we have to put it in there. But it's just a, you know, if we can keep you guys happy and you guys keep us happy, he said, we're not.
Well, Rodney, too, he said, with that also is, say we allow for 35 bracelets, and we're only using 15 of them, so all the other ones are sitting on the shelf vacant, that we could send those back. Remember how he said, that's part of that overage fee, if there are a lot that are just sitting there and not being anything done with them, all we have to do is send them back to them, they send us new ones, and it goes away. So it's not, with that, it's.
Yeah, he said, we never charge it, he said, we just have to put it in there. He said, if I see that you're using 30 out of 40, and they usually do like an audit, like at the end of the month or whatever, we'll say, hey, send us those other 10, and then call us tomorrow and request the 10 back.
When's our, when's our contract with the company?
We, to be honest with you, we've only signed one contract when we first started utilizing it. We've never signed one again. I mean, you guys know, because we've talked with Carrie, we've talked with Carol, we've never seen another contract again.
I told her if there's a cancellation, like, do you have to provide 70 days to cancel without a charge or something?
I don't know that.
Okay.
Well, we can check.
Of course, like I said, we're not under any type of contract with them.
It might be one that automatically carries it over.
Yeah.
Just on the end of the list.
Right. And they will actually come, if we want to do all of them in one day, they will send people to help us switch everybody out in one day and be done.
They also do.
And also, on top of that, her SCRAM unit that she uses, they're willing, if we go to use the GPS home confinement, they're willing to reduce her fees on her units. And then they go from $4.27, which is what she's paying now, to $4.15. So they'll cut her units down to price ones.
Can I make a good deal, man?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Next.
Remove second on my favor, shake your flag, say no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have. So moved. Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
You want to talk to them about the leasing?
Yeah, I'll go over, I'll talk to you a little bit about it. We got notified last Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, that our rent is going to be increased by $200 a month out of Dairy Port Center. The rental premium's up at the end of June. So it only gave us about three weeks to figure out, we didn't put that in the grant. So that is money above and beyond of what we, we actually put in for the grant. We actually increased the, the rental money about $100 for the grant, it went from eight to 900. And upon speaking with Jason Queen and stuff, he, he won't accept anything less than a $200 increase.
So what, so what we paying them?
We pay eight. We put in for nine, he's wanting a thousand. So.
We're 1,200 short.
We'll be, you know, if we don't get the money yet, we'll be short 1,200. Yes.
Potentially 24, depending on.
Potentially 24. So what we've been doing is, one, trying to, with, with the way the state is and not doing the budgeting or anything now, we don't know what we're going to get. We might be clearing until July, August, before we even know what we're getting towards your grant goes. So we've been looking at some other places to possibly rent, and we've located a couple of other places that's willing to take us for what we pay now. So, just letting you all know that we were currently looking, let Buddy know, because I know Commissioner Brady's on the, on the board. So it sort of put us at a little bit of a line, you know, with only having a couple of weeks to try to find a place and get out if we can't, if we can't afford it.
Is there a Peter, you utilizing down there now?
I don't know how many. We have four offices and one conference room. We've been trying to get.
The conference inside of that?
The other conference room, the big one, we've been trying to get it finished for a year, and it's never, never been done. So, we haven't been able to utilize it.
The places you've located, square footage wise?
Yeah, comparatively. Comparatively.
How soon can you be near those locations? I mean, do they have a conference room?
Well, the one location that we looked at is owned by CJ Morton. And it is, I can never think of that.
It used to be the old building.
The old, oh, the, yeah.
Right beside the Huddle House.
Right beside the Huddle House. We met, actually met with him earlier today, and we looked at it, we had the whole bottom floor.
And it's brand new, and he literally just remodeled the entire thing. It's, I can show you.
And everything's brand new, the doors, the walls, that would be 800. Yes.
That's the barn open?
Yes, yeah. Our, our issue is parking. I mean, we'd love to be here on Main Street somewhere, but we have sometimes six cars, and that's just our own when you count staff and count the other vehicles that we have. It's hard, and then you're on, talking about the clients pulling in and out, in and out, so.
Do we have to bring your choice?
No, we just wanted to make you aware of it. I think we, the board, will have to, we're going to have a special meeting, and the board will have to approve that. We are going to do a phone call out to the voting board members to see if, to at least let them know and to see what their take is on, you know, the new place.
Will Cheyenne have a wife, Colonel?
I'll, I'll take all my.
She'll have a job window.
Just have, I'm not to think for the water to go on, because she won't take that.
Yeah, I'm sure we don't.
Just keep that in mind, because it can be kind of pricey.
Right. So, just wanted to make you guys aware of everything here and where we're at. So we're still, still currently looking at some other places. So we're going to have to do something pretty quick because, you know, this is the end of the week. For a bit of month, you got two weeks. Yeah.
It seems to me, Rodney, you all are doing a fantastic job. You come in here with a plan for better equipment, saving money. You know the rent's going to be raised $200 a month, you're always looking for a better place, and probably you've always found a better place that you can rent. All right?
Right.
Same amount of money, so my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Rodney.
We'll see you.
There's upstairs there, just the ranch. And that building, it's actually split half now, it's like two apartments. Number one, it's totally separated off, so, no one, it's totally taken.
Thank you, guys.
Uh-huh. Good luck. Stay safe. See you.
I'm going to do a phone call next week to the board members. That way we can.
That's on the 26th, did it?
Yeah, but I'm going to do a phone call next week to try and see about the.
That's going to be.
Yeah.
And then the other one will be in Rose County.
Yeah.
I'm going to.
I can't talk to you.
No, you're good. If you have a change, it's fine. I'm patient with you.
If you were to come back.
I can't, I can't, we, you said. Make it right. There's probably. Three and a second.
It's SCRAM. The, the.
And how much?
Well, it's a little bit, it'd be about a penny.
Okay.
For that.
It's going to be from $4.27 to $4.50.
Yeah, $4.15, from $27 to $4.50.
Hey, Rodney, can you all be that in the hallway? We have a 3:30 appointment, further discussion on property owned by Jessica Bennington, located in Banks Tax District, Tax Map 2Q, Partial Number 46, Case Number 041212-01. The last extension given was during the regularly scheduled commission meeting held on April 6, 2017. Does this need Q1 report?
So you've been presented with photographs that Hobbie Hawkins took in the correct care, so the facility structure also took photographs of the property, which contains a trailer that the property owners are currently working on. There's a couple of buildings on the property. You've had time to review over the ordinance to see whether or not you believe the property has been brought into compliance, or if there's any other specifications that you want to include in the letter to the property owner.
I think this thing's been over since 2012. They have made improvements and, and working on it. I'd say, I don't have any objection to close the case. Thanks.
What are you doing as a motion?
Well, I don't know. Do I have a motion to close the case?
I think they'll continue to improve. With that being said, I'll make that motion to close the case, and if in fact they don't continue on to improve, if somebody wants to file another point, we'll look back into it.
Do I have a motion?
I agree. I mean, they, they always show up and kind of keep us up to date all the time, so I'll second Buddy.
Remove second on my favor, shake your flag. Can we move the second on paper, shake your body, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, I say aye. So.